I'd like to call a special meeting to order. Ms. Lametta, will you lead us in a prayer, please?
Dear Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Campbell, will you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call, Ms. Lametta?
Mrs. Azavado? Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Kraft? Mr. Egan? Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Dyssart?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
And Mr. Warner?
Here.
Okay, we're going on item number four, is the superintendent's evaluation. Each year, it's by state law that we have to have an evaluation of the superintendent, and so tonight's that night, okay? So at this time, the chair would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session to do the evaluation for Ms. Doris Foote.
Mr. England, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session in order to discuss the superintendent's yearly evaluation.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Dyssart, second by Ms. Long. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now go into executive session, and we'll go into room two, please. Okay, I need a motion to go back to the open session. We have a motion by Lemoine, second by Ms. Dyssart. All in favor?
Aye.
Back in session. By state law, we have to have a superintendent's evaluation each and every year, and this year, as always, Ms. Foote has done a fantastic job, and we look forward for another great year for St. Bernard Parish. And we thank you for all your efforts that you have done for this parish and for our school district. Thank you, Ms. Foote.
And just very briefly, I just want to thank each and every one of you and let everyone know how much I feel it is a privilege to be the superintendent of schools in St. Bernard Parish. And I will always feel that way till the day, well, let's say that I leave. But, no, in all seriousness, thank you very much, and I feel that this is a very special board as well as a very special school system with great kids, wonderful teachers, and parents, and administrators, and school support people. And together, I think we make it all work for the good of the students here in St. Bernard and the community. So thank you very much.
Right, and that's what it's all about.
That's what it's all about.
That's right. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting? We have a motion by Ms. Azavado, second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? That means to adjourn. We'll go directly into our regular meeting, the general committee meeting. Ms. Foote, will you lead us in a prayer, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening. As we approach the Christmas break, we call upon you to help each of us to pause and remember the reason for the season. We ask a special blessing upon our students as they take their exams next week, and also upon our teachers as they work feverishly to finish our first half of the school year. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Dyssart, will you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Ms. Foote, from row call, please.
Mrs. Azavado? Here. Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mrs. Dyssart?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foote. Moving on to item number four, Super News, Ms. Alex Snyder. How you doing?
Good, I'm good.
Feeling good?
Yeah. Thank you, yes. Good evening, y'all. With the holiday season, it comes an opportunity for some great publicity. You'll find in your packets our communications report as numbered number four. On the front, you'll see all of our local press coverage. We have had some really wonderful things happening throughout our school district. Along with some excellent local press coverage, we also have had some excellent articles, both in nola.com and the Times Picune because of our very own Barry Lemoine, who is at AJ this evening, or at Shumon High filming AJ this evening, as well as The Advocate. And if you missed, Airby being featured on WWL recently for the elementary Christmas caroling throughout our district, that was a really beautiful story, which if you flip to the second page, brings us to our social media report. You'll see that the Christmas caroling video that went up that evening had a lot of traction on Facebook. We had a lot of positive publicity from that as it was really a beautiful event and a great opportunity for our elementary teachers to get out into the community, see family and students in a setting that they don't often get to do. So it was fantastic. On page three and four, you'll see the outline of upcoming events. While we've had several things already happen, we still have a few things left. Dockville's Christmas at Dockville has been rescheduled for Sunday, December 16th due to weather. You'll see the schedule of Christmas student performances below on page three, both in the observation barn and in the performance barn. Again, that is Sunday, December 16th. And the final page, you'll see the Nutcracker Suite is being featured at the MoMA Center. Those three dates are labeled there, December 14th at 6:30 PM, December 15th at 11:00 AM and 12:30 PM, and December 19th at 6:30 PM. Tickets for that are still available and can be purchased by calling the number that you see there, 504-301-0239. And the final event, which is really exciting, is the Symphony Chorus of New Orleans will be performing at the Shumon High Cultural Arts Center alongside members of our CHS Voices and our music director, Annalise Kassar. Every year, the Symphony chooses one community outside of New Orleans that they visit, and this year, they picked Shellmet. And so we're super excited to have them on our campus, see our facilities, and to celebrate the Christmas season with our students. That will most likely sell out, and so if people are interested in that event, they should go ahead and purchase those tickets as soon as possible. So keeping this as short as possible, this evening, we also have the opportunity to hear from our Teachers of the Year as December's Super News is our special feature on the 12 amazing educators that were honored last month during our November Teacher of the Year Contest, which Mr. England was able to participate in. So he'll see some familiar faces up on the screen. But without any further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Jack for this special edition of Super News.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News. And on this special edition of Super News, we'll get to meet some of our super teachers, the dynamic dozen, our Teachers of the Year. Let's meet them now.
The best part about being a teacher is that I meet students at a crucial time in their development and growth. And by developing a relationship based on love and trust, I'm able to teach not only their minds but also their hearts, which leaves a positive and lasting impact on the both of us.
It's all about the children, and they, you know, they delight you. They really do. They, they, they love you, and it's nice coming to work every day and being loved. It's true.
Every child has a chance on learning, and learning in their own way. And for the end result, of course, it's fourth grade, so we teach the, you know, for the LEAP test, but to be able to do their best that they can do when they're taking any test and carry them forward through all their years of school.
My favorite thing about teaching is my relationships that I make with the kids. I, as I said before, that teaching them from kindergarten to fifth grade, I really get to know them individually.
I definitely want them to feel growth throughout the year. I want them to succeed always and feel successful, and I really hope that the relationships we form last, that they remember things that I taught them, not just academically, but just lifelong lessons, really.
After my students leave my classroom, I hope that they have the ability to analyze historical documents, to think critically, to understand that history is not just a subject that is distant past, but impacts them personally. And I hope that the study of history inspires them to be better people.
One of the things I love most about teaching is no two days are the same, no two hours are the same, honestly, with the amount of kids that you teach and get to meet every single day. You know, every single moment is different, and it keeps you on your toes, and it challenges you in the most difficult ways, but also, it's just such rewarding.
Because it is a career that is going to push you to your limits, but I think what I love most about it is that it's, it's always ongoing, you're always growing from it, and it's, you can always become better. And I think that for a lot of people that drive, it's going to help you to continue to want to become a better person. Whereas many careers, I feel like you kind of, you get that job, you do it, and you do the same thing every day, which can become redundant. Whereas in education, every day's different. So I think that's something that's really exciting.
And the students teach me just as much as I feel I can teach them, and so every year is a new group of kids. I can't say no to the challenge. I can't say no to the challenge of inspiring the youth or them inspiring me and, and being part of the education field, especially now that, you know, so much of it is changing. And I feel a duty, a sense of responsibility to the education field now to be a part of those changes and make them work, or to step up and say what else needs to be done to make it better.
Well, we have to be tough, but we also have to care about these kids, teach them another way of doing things than what they know, because obviously, they're there for a reason. So I think a lot of people think that they just go there and it's fun and games, and that's not the way it is. There's a lot of work that goes into teaching a student that comes to an alternative school.
I keep teaching because I get more out of it than I feel I would get in any other occupation out there. When the students really want to learn and get engaged, and they give you feedback, there's nothing else in the world quite like it. So I keep teaching because I feel that it's the best way to give back to the community. And I love it when students make these connections and learn.
Every child in my classroom has a goal. Their goals may be different. A goal for one child might look extremely high, and a goal for another child might be, let's just get through reading 10 words in a minute, you know? As long as I'm setting goals that are attainable for each child on their own level, they will be successful.
I believe that my students are successful if they leave me with a love for learning that continues through later years, knowing that they can succeed in anything they put their mind to.
I love having the students that I have. It's very culturally diverse at Airby Elementary. Our school actually has 13 countries and seven different languages being spoken, which I think is amazing, just to have that culture and being exposed to those customs and traditions, I think is fabulous.
It's been a great journey, and I, I'm so happy I chose this career and helping children and just meeting so many wonderful people that I'm working with and have worked with. It's, it's, it's been wonderful.
I found our administration over at Riley to be very supportive of us, willing to help, willing to go the extra mile. You can call any of the instructional coaches here, they're willing to come, help you, what do you need? I have yet to meet someone who is not helpful, Ms. Lametta. I asked for the kids at Riley to have access to AR. She got that for me. It's wonderful. They're not reading as many books as I would like yet, but they're doing it, and it's great.
They always put the kids first, and I think that's the most important thing. Sometimes you just need to push aside the curriculum and just say, okay, let's get to the root of the problem today. And by putting the student first, I think is what really makes a difference, and I think that's what makes Airby so awesome.
At Mira Elementary, our teachers and our administration are willing to do anything to make the kids happy, to make the kids succeed.
Hands down, our school system is amazing, and that we have so many people that are dedicated to really pushing our children. We're really lucky to be handed a lot to give to our kids. Many other districts don't have that luxury. They're having to, you know, come up with their own materials. They don't have the technology that we have. It's every, we pretty much have everything in the palms of our hands, so to utilize it, and sometimes it might be overwhelming because you feel like you have so much being given to you, but you have to sit back and realize that that's really something that we need to appreciate because not everybody has that luxury.
I knew, it's a cliche answer, but I knew I wanted to be a teacher my whole life. I remember being at Sebastian Roy Elementary School and mimicking and dressing up as the teachers. They would even give me some of their old tradition books to go play with because they knew I was always pretending to be a teacher when I went home.
Growing up with education around me, it just felt natural to me. When we were little, my sister and I, we had chalkboards in our house, my dad would bring home teacher's guides, and we played school all the time. So I think that it was just the natural route for me. And I'm, I'm very blessed to have chosen it because I wake up every day and I don't feel like I'm going to work, and it's a really great feeling. I went to school at St. Claude Heights, then went to Airby Park Middle, where my mom was a math teacher, and then after that, Andrew Jackson. After Andrew Jackson, I went to LSU, thought I was going to be a Tiger, lasted only two weeks, got homesick, came home to UNO, and then that's when I switched and knew that I wanted to be a teacher.
I continued on with my education, but I just, I think I was lucky enough to have good teachers that I wanted to emulate and spent my time playing. And when it came down to picking a major, you know, after I went past all the other majors that everybody else was in, I had an honest conversation with myself and ended up that teaching was my gift, it was my calling. And so I gave into it and fell in love.
And I went back to school with the 20-year-olds when I was in my 40s, and I went to Nunez Ready in the Parish for a couple, for a year and a half, and then I went to UNO and graduated within four years and stayed in the parish to teach. So it was kind of like a calling that I had at the beginning of my life, I guess you would say, of my working life, but I got to do what I wanted to do, and I love it, and I really don't work because I love what I do.
There are many reasons that I enjoy teaching in St. Bernard Parish. There are two reasons that stick out the most to me. First, I think of my mom. She taught for 40 years, and I remember growing up in St. Bernard Parish, and everywhere we went, people walked up to her and said, you know, you changed how I viewed school, or you're the reason why I went to college, or you're the reason why I pursued this career. So witnessing that on a weekly basis was really inspirational. And it's, it's where I'm from as well, so I get to teach in the community where I'm from, and I think that's important because I grew up in St. Bernard Parish, and I'm a proud product of the public school systems here. So now I have the opportunity to give back to the community that I, that I feel gave me so much.
A lot of people in my family were teachers, including my mom and my grandma, so always kind of been around teachers my whole life. I actually came to St. Bernard from Virginia originally through the Teach for America Teaching Program. And when I got here, I just fell in love with the city and with the people that I work with. They're just the best people in the world, and here I am, for years later.
And I love when students actually, you can tell they retain the information, and light bulbs go off, and, and they're learning. There's, there's no other feeling like that when, when that happens.
It's all about the team and the students and being successful, and they prepare you for that, and they help you with that. They help you to be the best teacher that you can be.
It went from one school with trailers, you know, Shumon High with trailers, and just the devastation that this area suffered to, you know, five years into where it was, and then now to see it even more where it is is just tremendous. It's incredible. And the community has, has benefited from it, and the students and the teachers, and it's just an incredible school system, and it's top, top-notch, top in the state.
Congratulations to these 12 outstanding educators who represent all of the good things happening in our schools each day. Would also like to salute our three parish-wide Teachers of the Year. Chris Deere from Shumon High School, Erin Johnston from Davies Elementary, and Sharon Landry from Tris Middle School. We thank you for your commitment in the classroom, and congratulations. And that will do it for this edition of Super News, and we'll see you next time, where we always let the Super News roll.
And I tell you what, we are so blessed to have these types of individuals for public education in our district, and we look forward to, for another great year with these special teachers. And being on the committee, you know, to judge, it was difficult, I tell you, because they was amazing. The insight that I got out of it was, you know, their heart, you know, what they really, this is, this is what they live for, you know, they look forward to each and every day. So thank you, and thank all of our teachers in our system. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Okay, moving on to item number five, Mr. Gaines, that says technology. Technology uses in the classroom. Ms. Lametta?
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update this evening. I know I came to you about a year or so ago, and we talked about adding Chromebooks to the schools and the impact that we felt that it would have, and I've had the pleasure of walking through all the schools at least about three times now, and it's been so joyous to see the students using the technology and see the wonderful things they're doing. So I wanted to give you an update this evening on some of the things they're able to do with the technology and some things we're thinking about doing moving forward. So on the handout I gave, you know, we do have Chromebooks in the classrooms in third, fourth, and fifth grade, in sixth through eighth grade, in the core subjects in middle school, at Shellmet High School, we have them at the Ninth Grade Academy, we have them at CF Raleigh, of course, and in the EOC and/or LEAP 2025 now is the new way they call the high school, and high stakes testing. So we have Chromebook carts in all of those classrooms, and it's been wonderful to see the students in elementary school on the Lexia for the, for the classroom curriculum. They're able to fill the reading gaps, they're able to move forward in their reading, and it's been great to see the teachers be able to give SRI diagnostic tests and the STAR reading diagnostics, so the students can see their growth, and it makes them try more and achieve more. It's also been wonderful to see them take their AR tests in the classroom, right there, nice and convenient, the whole class can take it at once. It's been wonderful to see them get to read LEAP-aligned text passages for science and social studies tests right there online. The teachers can take the Google Classroom and set up the lesson, they can have the text, the questions, and the students can interact with the computer the same way they will in fifth through eighth on the state test, high school as well. And one high school teacher said absent students can have access to the work and come the next day prepared with what they've missed if they've been sick, as we've had some, you know, stomach bugs and things going around, the students can actually do some work at home and come prepared the next day. So it's not just helping classroom instruction and diagnostics in the classroom, it's really helping the students and teachers see their progress and even help them work at home. So it's just been amazing to see, and the engagement level of the students has been wonderful. When I watch the students do the fast math in the Lexia, they're, it's amazing how fast they do work on the computers. We give them a set number of minutes each day on them, and they take advantage of every second of that time. It's just been wonderful to see. In addition, they're able to do their LEAP 360 assessments, which the state provides for us, LEAP 360 interim assessments along the year, so the students can actually try the state platform, they can get access to the different tools and see how they would do on the state platform. So I was at Lacoste today and was able to see some students doing their interim assessments on LEAP 360 on the Chromebooks, and it was wonderful. It was seamless, they've gotten used to it, and I have to really applaud the teachers because they've really done a deep dive to learn all they have to learn, Google Classroom, LEAP 360, and all the different pieces they have to learn, Lexia, Xern for math, iExcel. They've really jumped in and really learned what they have to do to provide some good instruction, good formative assessment, and really some good engaging activities for the students. In addition, with the Chromebooks, they do have cameras, so with our illuminate software, you know, third and fourth grade is paper-based test, so the students can do their paper-based testing, and the teachers and/or the students can just hold up their bubbled-in bubble sheet right in front of the Chromebook camera, and it will grade it instantly. So instead of the students just putting their paper in a bin and wait for the teacher to grade later, they can hold it in front of a Chromebook the teacher's having one section of the room, hold it up to the document camera, it grades it, and they can put it down, and that's done. So the teacher can spend his or her time planning for what the students missed instead of trying to grade all the things that they normally have to do. So it's just really been amazing. So as we look at Chromebooks, you know, we have iPads right now in K1 and 2, and we have the Chromebooks that are graded on up. Our model has been five computers in the back of the classroom for a long time. With the Chromebooks in the middle schools, in the core area classrooms, and at the Ninth Grade Academy, those desktops have aged out as far as the processors have become out of date and slow, and the RAM has become slow. So since we have the Chromebooks in those rooms, we have been able to remove the five computers in the back from the Ninth Grade Academy and from the core area classes in the middle schools, and that has saved us from having to do virus updates and Windows updates and a lot of maintenance on those computers. In addition, we've found over the years, much of what we do in the classroom is internet-based, it's web-based. So looking forward to purchase a desktop is twice the cost to purchase a Chromebook. So we're thinking, as we start to plan for budgeting, we're thinking, we did a pilot at Gochee. In K1 and 2, we put five Chromebooks in one kindergarten class, one first grade class, and one second grade class, and we're having them do what they normally do on a daily basis with the Chromebooks to see if it really meets their needs before making any further decisions, but we're exploring the possibility of maybe putting five Chromebooks instead of five computers because they're half the cost from the computers. So I just wanted to give you the update of the exciting things I've seen, the wonderful ways the teachers have worked so hard to give the students great opportunities with the Chromebooks, and that we're considering putting those in if they meet the needs instead of possibly the five in the back. The teachers also love that the Chromebooks are portable, and that I see so many teachers pulling students on the side and working with their individual needs. And I have to say, with the class size of what the teachers have, 20, 25, 26, whatever they have, I've always seen teachers find time to pull aside students who are struggling and help them, and the Chromebooks give them that mobility and makes it really engaging for the students as well. And they do that to push the students also. If students have what we're working on now, they can assign them some things to push them further. So it's been really exciting, and we're looking at it to possibly be a cost-cutting measure in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Any questions or comments? Well, I want to, okay, go ahead.
Just one comment, that's wonderful that you all are piloting that at Young School site to see and get feedback from the teachers, because it sounds like not only is it a financial advantage, but having that mobility to move those, those five laptops around into another area of the classroom use is a great strategy. So that's great, I'm interested to get feedback.
From, according to Ms. Young, the teachers have loved it so far, so we want them to get through the bulk of the year and make sure it meets the needs before making any decision.
Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Dyssart?
Thank you for your report. Also, the Chromebook, the ability to check the test papers is incredible. What a, what a time saver for the teachers, and as you said, you know, they, they can use that time that they might have been grading papers, and, and... and, you know, future planning and also in helping the students in the classroom at that time. So that's awesome.
And it's even a time saver from scanning because we had multiple scanners in the schools, but there wasn't a scanner in every classroom. So teachers had to get their papers together and go to the different scanning spots. This way, it can be done right on the spot.
Any other comments? Well, I have to say, I'm going to take you on a little history trip. 1997, we had our first technology plant that we formed. In 1997, we said five computers in the back of the classroom was the thing. And now here we are, 2018, removing those five, about time. I'm going to tell you, it's about time. I was telling Ms. Bochee 10 years ago, we need to remove those computers, go to our laptops, right, Ms. Bochee? I was pushing one-on-one back then. So it's about time and I'm glad. So to see engagement, that's what turned me on constantly and the teachers' calling, you know, to see them, when I was teaching computer science and my tests were on the computer and they automatically graded the test, so I didn't have to worry about the test. You know, that's a big time saver. You could concentrate on getting those students engaged and what their trouble spots are and get them over that. So Ms. Lametta, we're living in exciting times.
We are, we are very blessed.
Keep pushing, keep pushing.
We're very blessed.
Any other? Yes, Ms. Bochee.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that as well, I think one thing, you know, as school districts around the country over the past few years have tried to go one-on-one with these devices. One of the things that I think many of them have lacked, and we have been, I think, a little more patient prior to implementation, is it's all well and good to say, oh, everyone has access to an individual device. However, if it is not integrated within the curriculum and it's being used properly by the teachers and the students, then that investment, in my opinion, would be worthless because you've got all of these devices and machines sitting there but not being used to improve student achievement and improve instruction. So with the Chromebooks and being able to access our curriculum directly, being able to access what we're doing, you're not seeing kids, kids aren't sitting there playing on them or just possibly using them as a research tool solely to write a paper or do something of that sort. But they're using it daily in the instructional process and the curriculum is there and the assessments are there. So that piece of it is, I think, what's lacking in a lot of places when you're investing in all of this technology. Because we used to say, you know, you can't win chasing technology because every day something new, better, bigger, and more expensive or less expensive is coming around. And the trick is, you've got to look to see how is it going to benefit what your ultimate goal is and how you're going to make that investment. And the day of the desktop, as you said, Mr. Gaines, has long passed us by and the mobility of these devices is so important. So I think, you know, I think we're doing a really good job and Ms. Lametta has been instrumental in leading this initiative, has really, I think, enhanced the learning process in each and every classroom. And doing the pilot, as Ms. Lametta talked about, is the responsible way to go. And I think from both an educational and a fiscal perspective, it's going to be the right decision for the right reasons that will help move our school system forward.
And, you know, piggyback again, back in that same time period, we realized that the curriculum had to be married in with the technology. We realized that early because St. Bernard Parish was one of the first parish to have a technology center funded by the state. We were region one. And we had several years of training teachers how to integrate that into the curriculum. We're talking about the early 2000, 2001 at that time period. So we knew early on, and Ms. Bochee is correct, you know, you just can't have the toy there. You know, that toy has to have a purpose, you know, and it has to be part of the curriculum. And we knew that early on. And that's why St. Bernard is so successful because we had the very first one based here at Chelmsford High School. So thank you very much, Ms. Lametta.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines. Item number six, personnel changes, Mr. Paul Granberry. Glad to have you here, sir.
Good evening.
Let's see, we've got some retirees, huh?
Couple of retirees, yes.
Yeah, retirees, Stacy Alfonso. We wish her well.
She finally turned her letter in today.
She did. And then we've got some other retirees too. We've got Glenn Gabb, you know, over at Chelmsford, you know, he did a fantastic job. Good man, good man. And then Antoinette, I hope I pronounced his last name correctly.
Audrey. Annie Lauder. Annie's been a bus driver for a long time.
Right, and we wish him well.
Over 30 years.
Right, we wish him well. Ms. Daisart.
I just want to ditto Stacy Alfonso, who's at Lacoste Elementary since it opened, you know, first opened. She was a wonderful principal and, you know, all the children loved her and so did the parents and the grandparents and the teachers. And Stacy did a great job and I want to thank her for her many years of service. And Glenn Gabb, you would see him all around, everywhere, and Glenn did such a wonderful job. And Ms. Annie, she was, like you said, a bus driver for over 30 years.
Over 30 years.
So, you know, combined with those three retirees, we're losing a lot of years and a lot of experience and a lot of dedication. So we thank them and happy retirement to them.
When Stacy turned in her letter, her words were bittersweet. Bittersweet.
Ms. Bochee?
Yeah, I can't let it pass without commenting on these three people too. I mean, I think we all know how valuable and wonderful a person Stacy Alfonso is. From Sebastian Roy, then through the storm, Andrew Jackson, all the different jobs that she's held with the school system in different capacity, in Title I and just, she has been pretty much just about anything it can be in the curriculum area within our school system. And then leading Lacoste Elementary at a very critical time of its opening and through this, getting it all set and on a good path. She's just a wonderful, wonderful person as well. The kids loved her, everybody who works with her loves her, and she's going to be really soaring missed. However, you know, we wish her well in retirement. No, she's going to be coming back to help us out because we always call them back. And Glenn Gabb, wonderful, wonderful man who has, he and his wife have just been wonderful within the school system, great family and great contributors to our children and to the community. And then Annie, you know, driving the bus for so long, but she also trains bus drivers and she's taken, has a real leadership role in the transportation department, has been invaluable over the course of the years in many different initiatives in transportation. So she's going to be missed as well. But we wish all three of them well in their retirement, but we do expect them to come back and volunteer and help out within the school system.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes, with Stacy, I agree. She was a wonderful principal, wonderful person, and she was a wonderful student. She was, and her husband as well.
Yes. Good man.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Okay, move on to item number seven, Mr. Long, Executive Committee.
Item seven, 2019, 2020 school calendar. And we have Ms. Lametta again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm getting a lot of camera time today. Okay, in your packet, I have some information that explains the three different calendar options. And I have to credit Mr. Dennis Bradley. He got a wonderful group together who did a really good job trying to come up with some creative different calendars for the teachers and employees to choose, from which to choose. So the first page in your handout, I just broke down some similarities of each calendar. So on the first page of your handout, you know, we have the four professional development days before school starts. And we also have two, a fall and a winter PD day. So what I did on that first table is just put the examples where the option one, teachers would come back on Friday, August 2nd. And the same thing on option two, but option three, it would be coming back on August 5th, which would be a Monday, okay? And then the other two differences would be the fall PD days where the first option would be PD on November 1st, the day after Halloween, and PD on January 21st, the day after Martin Luther King Observance Day. And then option two has the same start dates, but option two, the professional development day would be October 25th, which we got a lot of great feedback for the three report card conference nights we did this year. We did elementary in one night, middle school in one night, and high school in one night. Parents, teachers, and principals felt like more parents were able to talk with teachers and be seen and get their needs heard. So we're going to continue with those three separate report card conference dates. So option two was where the teacher PD day would be on October 25th, which is the Friday of the week that we had report card conference. And then January 3rd would be the January PD day, which is the last day that, before the kids come back from Christmas holidays. So that was an option. And then option three gave the one day later start, but the weekend was included, which made it feel like three days later. The same November 1st PD day and then the January 3rd PD day at the end of the Christmas holidays. And in the middle, option two, number two, just explains the three report card conference nights that were on all three options. And number three gives you the common features in all three different options. So every calendar had a week for Thanksgiving and a week for Mardi Gras. All calendars had April 9th, 10th, 13th, and 14th as Easter holidays. And the last day for students being May 21st with Records Day being May 22nd. So all calendars ended on Friday, May 22nd without anyone having, without teachers having to come to school on Memorial Day. That was the goal, to finish by Memorial Day, okay? So I do have the second page, which lists everything out for you in words and has the different features in the bottom that I explained on the first page. The last page of your handout shows you the voting from each site. And option one won overwhelmingly with 501 votes. And option one mirrors the calendar we have this year. And option one won last year overwhelmingly, so I had a feeling it would win again. So with 501 votes, the recommendation from the teachers and employees was option one. Now what I gave you beyond that is actually three separate calendars, so you can see a visual of the three options. Where option one, the calendar that was voted to us the most favorable, you can see there the start date for teachers would be August 2nd. The student start date is Thursday, August 8th, Labor Day holiday. Report card conference, you can see in October, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. November 1st, the day after Halloween, would be a teacher PD day and student holiday, a week for Thanksgiving. And Christmas holidays would start on Monday, December 23rd, and run through that Friday, January 3rd, and students would report back on January 6th. And you'll see in January, we have the Martin Luther King Jr. Observance Holiday and then the teacher PD day following. February has a week for Mardi Gras. And Easter holidays, you'll see Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. And then we end up last day of students, May 21st, Records Day, May 22nd, finishing by Memorial Day. So that's the option that most closely mirrors what we have this school year. And that option was option one.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta. Mr. Gaines, you have a question?
Well, as a former teacher and I'm looking at the dates, wow, a week, we have a week in May, you know, we used to be finished in June, you know.
Yes, we did talk about that. We used to finish the end of May.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yes, and so it's not a whole lot of variety. As you see, we got creative in adding the variety in option two and three with the PD days because outside of that, there's not much wiggle room if you want to finish by Memorial Day and if you don't want to start in July.
No, no.
You can see we're starting already with teachers on August 2nd. So we're trying not to make them start in July and we're trying to finish up on Memorial Day. So having those two parameters.
It's June and July, a solid June and July for the teachers, which is great.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta.
I think it's wonderful that we allow the people to vote on it this early so that they can plan their vacations and such for the next school year. It's great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner and a second by Ms. Lamoyne. And that's as for option, to approve the recommendation of option one?
Yes. Prove option one recommended by employees of the administration.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote your machines.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lametta.
Thank you. Thank you.
Turn it back over to you, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Move on to item number eight, superintendent's recommendations, Ms. Bochee.
Well, just hopefully everyone is having a good holiday season so far. We're going to be wrapping up with two weeks of school left. I mean, we're into holiday celebrations, Christmas celebrations, exams coming up at the end of the nine weeks. So everything is going very well. We just ask people to check your school calendars and our website for any special events that are happening at your children's school between now and Christmas.
Anything else from Ms. Bochee? If not, we'll move on to item number nine, a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Estevada. All in favor?
Aye.
This means a joint. Good night, everyone.[1746.98]